Uh, uh, rec prices have remained at, at their, at as high as they can go. Which is forty dollars a rec for a mass class one rec. Uh, main class two is, is kind of the other. Class of resources we look at is mostly. Older hydro and, uh, smaller hydro. About nine percent of the. New England region is served by existing hydro, not excluding, uh. Hydro Quebec resources. Uh, so there's a decent amount of, uh. Hydro in, uh, in New England and, you know. We and, uh, RMLD and a group of the other. Uh, MLPs have purchased a lot of that already. That's typically the lowest cost decent sized rec in New England. And, uh, that rec has been, uh. Down around two dollars and it could go as high as ten. Uh, but we've seen like these storms come in like today, for instance, we see like. We're not seeing like steady rain. With climate change, we're seeing, uh. Big storms come in, drop a lot of water and then kind of go away for a while. And, uh, that's, that's not great for hydro because when that happens, a lot of that gets spilled. Over the dam, it can't store that. Uh, but that, that's the kind of things we're seeing in, in the hydro market that. That increases volatility in hydro prices. And then. This is just kind of the transactions. That E and E has assisted the MLPs with getting done since twenty twenty. We've done some non-carbon, we did some non-carbon transactions prior to that. But really since twenty twenty and since, uh, Massachusetts passed the requirement. The MLPs to, uh. To work towards, uh, net zero. Uh, we've ramped up, uh, our purchases and our negotiations to get more and we've done. A little over two million megawatt hours per year. Of, uh, non-carbon energy among all the twenty-four MLPs we work with. That's a pretty significant amount of non-carbon energy and, uh. Probably the MLPs are the biggest players in that market and getting that market moving. Uh, in the right direction and so. Yeah, we've done a, a good group, a good mix of all the different non-carbon. Uh, resource that included a good mix of existing and, and new. It's a little, uh, weighted towards existing because. A, a decent part of that purchase is nuclear energy. Uh, which we do need. We want to be non-carbon going forward, we only have two nuclear plants. Uh, left in New England. And I think they, they're going to play a big role. In, uh, our non-carbon picture going forward. Uh, because they provide a base, base load, non-carbon energy with the rest of this. Is all intermittent energy. So I kind of did, this is kind of, and I don't, I don't want to quite. Play like this with the low hanging fruit, but these were, looking back.
Mm-hmm.
It was good, we did these deals because we got these deals at. Extremely competitive prices, we were coming out of COVID. And, uh, and the economy was down. Prices for everything, well, not everything, but, but a lot of things were down. So we locked up a lot of this energy, which sets a great foundation. For doing more of these transactions at maybe a little bit higher price. But it still works into the portfolio and it still keeps. MLP's non-carbon energy prices extremely competitive. Uh, compared to others in the marketplace.
Question, sorry, um, I'm here in the waiting room.
Okay.
Um, just a question on, um, for the, this is specifically non-carbon. So how would that compare to the total portfolio? What portion of the portfolio?
Uh, it depends on like, on the MLP and Greg, what you know, what RMLD.
Yeah. I know ours, but yeah.
Yeah, generally speaking. Most of the, uh. MLPs that we work with are already at the fifty percent. Uh, of their total portfolio being non-carbon, pretty much all of them are. At or near that number, so they're already in compliance with the twenty, thirty. Uh, requirements of, of the mass, uh. Was kind of get the name, yes, yeah, thank you, thanks. Uh, so it's almost fifty percent.
Okay.
So we're, we're most of where at.
Uh, question?
Yes.
Looking the forward pricing volatility, actually it's a backward looking, you know, I guess it's a forward looking chart, yeah, four seven. Um, noticing the secondary peak is happening in July and. Not quite, um. I'm coming about to the same level so that. We're just seeing more air conditioning, more demand for natural gas for air conditioning.
We are starting to see electrification, that's a great question, we are seeing electrification kick in. So we are seeing, uh. More, uh, uh, there, there's an, there's an AC component to that anyway. But we start to see more consistent electric usage kind of across the entire year.
And I just want to comment.
Oh, sorry.
So real quick to the re, August, um, while the load is higher in August. Um, the gas, the natural gas prices, which is roughly half of the generation in New England. It is, it is not being diverted to heating, so there's a, the gas prices, natural gas prices that feed half the market are low in the summertime. So what you see that little, that, that bump up is due to load. But the underlying gas prices is significantly lower than it is in the winter months.
Yeah, yeah, very, very good, good point, Greg, uh. Yeah, there is like the gas pipeline network is designed to serve the coldest of cold days and the coldest of cold years. Uh, so it's a lot of quote unquote excess capacity. And so in the summertime, gas price, gas. Transportation price, we call it basis. The difference between where the gas is produced, where the gas is used. The basis price, so that, uh, yeah, a, a full rate on an interstate pipeline can be a dollar fifty per MMBTU. The basis in the wintertime, what the value of that is can be. As high as twenty-five dollars per MMBTU. Uh, or in the summertime, it can be. You know, ten cents. Literally ten cents, you see you paying ten cents more for gas in New England as you are, where it's produced. Uh, primarily on the Gulf Coast region.
In the non-heating.
In the non-heating months, thank you, Greg.
Okay, one, one question here, Bob. This is Vivek. Online, uh, so question, you talked about three gas pipelines coming into New England. Uh, I guess Columbia is one of them, right?
What are the, what are the three guys?
Yeah, so it's Tennessee Gas Pipeline, which kind of serves, comes in from the west, kind of serves up into northeastern Massachusetts. Uh, so it kind of serves this region. Algonquin Gas Transmission comes in from southern New England, goes through Connecticut. And, uh, comes up really kind of in the s- south of Boston, it does come up to like the Walfam area. And then, uh, Maritimes and Northeast Pipeline comes down from, uh. Uh, the Canadian, uh, Maritime Provinces. They thought at one point there was going to be a lot of gas offshore Nova Scotia. And that did not materialize. So they built this pipeline that actually, uh. Is empty a lot of the year, but there, there is a big LNG. Storage facility in New Brunswick. So, uh, but that, they, they fill and empty that based. Only on economics, if they see prices high. They'll bring in some LNG, if they don't see that, they, they'll, they won't put any LNG in those tanks. So that's the other big LNG, so LNG for New England versus Everett Terminal.
So, so the pipeline that comes to RMLD territory, would that be the Tennessee Pipeline?
Uh, yes, it is, yeah.
Right, and, and Maritimes.
Oh, and actually, yeah, right, Maritimes does touch the outskirts of, uh, North Reading. Goes through, uh, then goes down through Middleton, it comes. Uh, down through Maine, New Hampshire, then basically follows kind of like Route one fourteen to Fort Beverly. And it goes into Boston Harbor, goes around Boston Harbor and delivers into Algonquin and, uh, Wayman. I used to work.
So, so, so those are the two pipelines that come, but if we are dealing with Columbia, so Columbia would be?
Colombia serves, uh. Primarily the, the mid-Atlantic region, Columbia would deliver into Algonquin and Tennessee.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It is actually Aricoy Pipeline, which is, not to leave them out, but they're in. Kind of, they ti- come from, like, eastern New York, around Albany. And they go into, uh, western Pennsylvania, but that line is primarily serving. Long Island, it kind of backbeats New York City.
Thank you.
Yep, welcome. Uh, that's it, so, uh. You know, we think continued volatility is kind of the. Word at the, word of the market and, uh, keeping a balanced portfolio is kind of what, what, what we. Uh, suggest and we work with the MLPs to, to implement. That's it.
Question. Um, what's the appetite of E and E to, I guess, invest in new?
Type. Oh yeah, thanks for mentioning that, yeah, so. Uh, because of all the intermittent, uh, non-carbon energy is typically intermittent energy. So the more intermittent energy we get. Uh, and actually the increased use of electricity. Uh, is going to increase the need for, uh, more electric transmission. So. And I'm not our electric transmission expert, but the, the outlook is. For these electric transmission costs to keep on going up rather substantially and, uh. And, you know, I, I think that, that's the, and E and E. Is started an electric transmission company. In order to look at opportunities where maybe, uh, a new transmission line going through an MLP service territory. Can, can, uh. Help the si- help the transmission system. And if you own transmission like RMLD does. We look at that as a good hedge. Like, is those, if those prices increase. If you own some of it, you can share those increased prices. And that'll work to keep your overall electric rates down, right? Because now you own a piece of that, so we look at that as a hedge and that's why E and E Transmission was formed. To try and get a piece of that market. In an, in an opportunistic manner, really. Yeah, and there may be some place, there's some time where we could work with the IOUs. Uh, in a, in a, on a particular project, uh, to get, to get something done, that's kind of like. The path of least resistance, so that's how we look at that.
So, so on that, Bob, will you be able, who, who will be able to? I know FERC is coming up with the new transmission rules, right? Uh, and I think there's like a six-month period for the ISO New England to figure that out. But will you guys come back and advise us on that?
Yeah, uh, there's a lot of changes going on and then by the FERC just issued a one thousand page. Uh, order on the electric transmission market going forward. So we're kind of digesting that now. But, you know, it looks like that that's going to allow for greater sharing. Of transmission costs within a region. So it'll allow for more non-carb, carbon resource to come online and spread those costs. Like throughout the region and not just on the one state. That might have greater, uh, non-carbon goals than another, so, you know. Sounds like a good plan, we'll have to, the, the devil's in the details, we'll have to see what that actually means.
Vivek, this is Greg, um, so as we talked about a couple of meetings back. We're one of nine of the MLPs that are part of this E and E Transmission piece, um. And Dave Kavanaugh, as Bob mentioned, is one of the E and E SVPs that's, that's. Championing the project, um, there will probably be an opportunity for him either. In the July meeting or the September meeting to, uh, provide an update to us. There's a lot of things that are just starting to happen right now in the transmission space, as, as Bob alluded to, so we'll. We'll take an action item either in July or maybe September will be a logical time to, uh, have an update.
Yeah, no, 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 thanks, because I think there's a lot of discussion in that about. Integrating storage resources and others and, yeah, and people paying for use, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, one other thing I forgot to mention, just want to mention is, uh. We recently did a transaction and RMLD participated in purchasing additional. Uh, energy from Hydro Quebec, that was a five-year transaction. Uh, so I think it's, I think it started off, starts.
Started again.
Uh, yeah, January, it's coming January, and then it ends in twenty thirty. Uh, we tried to get Hydro Quebec to go longer, get term on that deal. But, uh, Hydro Quebec is unsure. Of their hydro generation capability moving forward, so that was kind of like. If we didn't do anything in New England, we could always look north. Because it's this huge hydro system, hydro generation system in Quebec. Uh, but they're unsure how much they're going to have to export, uh, going forward, so that's another. Reason for the volatility.
Is that due to climate change? That due to climate change? No, uh, there might be multiple drivers to that, they will have their own energy increased demand as they have.
Canadian demand, Canadian demand.
Yeah, it may just be a matter of how much they had for export because they may.
It, it could just be a philosophy view, which is the commissioner saying it. Where like they want to keep more of the, their energy in Quebec and build up industry. That's heavily electric. Uh, in Quebec and that, that's just, that could be, but there's also, uh. There's also, uh, it's becoming more difficult to get new projects, new hydro projects done. Uh, in, in Quebec for a number of reasons.
Well, dam projects are not looked favorably anymore and you can look at Newbury Port, um, Newbury Port that, or Ipswich, one of the towns just voted. In a non-binding resolution to take their town dam down, so. Damming rivers, damming streams, generating the reservoir that generates the power is.
Not, yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good, I mean, uh, you know, we all live, that's the Ipswich River, Ipswich River, a lot, I live in North Reading, right by the Ipswich, so. You know, that's a good thing for the Ipswich River, well, that dam though, that dam was. Never a hydro, uh, uh, if it was a hydroelectric dam, it was a really small, I think it was for, uh. Really just for.
It was to generate water.
Local production, yeah, yeah, it's an old dam. Manufacturing, you know, a hydro dam. Tends to be very, very tall and if you, you could even see, we have some very big dams, surprisingly big dams. In western Massachusetts and in Maine, uh, and, and they have, you know, if they don't have. Fish ladders, they soon will have fish ladders, so they're kind of doing the right thing. To allow the fish to swim upstream and bring life back to the rivers. And the hydro, you know, supporting those hydro producers is a good thing because it gives them money to do that kind of thing, to do the right thing. Uh, within the hydro system, the, the Ipswich Dam is a small dam. It's just simply just blocking the fish from getting upstream.
That's, I was more commenting, yeah, and how people look at dams, yeah.
No, I'm like, I'm so unfair, I'm so happy that they actually voted in favor of taking that dam down, the particular one. That's, that's, oh, sorry.
Or just staying on that, um. Same theme, what happened with the power lines that were coming down and then Maine stopped that? Where is that project now?
So that, uh, that project is going forward. Uh, that, that, that project was bringing and the, and Hydro Quebec does, they actually renegotiated those power contracts. Uh, and we're seeing more of that happening in the business, it's, uh. You know, I, I'm an attorney, went to law school and like. A contract's a contract they teach you, but that's really not the way things are going. In the energy business because of supply chain issues and, uh. Inflationary issues and ability to get things done, but, you know. There was a lot of local opposition and it was really driven by. Local energy producers didn't want that. Energy to come into New England to compete with them. Uh, they finally did get through the Maine Supreme Court. And it is, it is moving forward, but that only brings power into central Maine. You still have to get the power from central Maine down here. And there's going to be more upgrades needed, uh, for that to happen, so that, like, Massachusetts is buying power. And I tell this, my wife's from Maine, I said, and I tell all my, I told my mom, you should be in favor of that. Project because it's bringing power into Maine. Which will lower the locational marginal pricing in Maine. And we will get some down here, it does benefit Massachusetts as well. Uh, but it benefits Maine, it's, it's a direct benefit to Maine, but it is happening now, okay.
Uh, one other, but, um. On, when you're purchasing energy, what, what do you feel like the market's going to take against ISOs going forward? As, as, as we progress, you know, we're MLPs, we're.
Yeah, when we, when we purchase energy, I. We purchase enough that we have kind of an ongoing purchasing stress and we know where prices are. But we, we, when we look at purchasing energy, we do a forward price curve. So we look at financial, the financial markets. And then on top of that, we look at the fundamental markets, what's happening in the market, like offshore wind is delayed. So that would increase our forward curve price and the forward curve price has gone. And that's not as volatile because we kind of try to take the volatility out of that pricing where we're negotiating a transaction. Uh, so on average, that's been anywhere from like forty to sixty dollars per megawatt hour in the last five years. But it could, it could go as high as like, it went as high as ninety dollars a few years ago. So when, when we're measuring what we buy for, we're, we're measuring that off of our forward curve. And the supplier has a forward curve as well. And a lot of the negotiation is. Getting convinced. Who's right and who's wrong on that forward curve analysis. But like, we did some solar deals and, you know, there were issues with solar with tariffs and that kind, they worked with supplier. Uh, so they were able to get their panels, uh, imported. Uh, so that there are issues like that too, that are beyond the forward curve, just kind of fundamental. Market delivery issues, uh, that we still, that we're working with. But we're seeing, you know, with the most recent prices we're seeing are in the, you know. High seventy, high seventy dollar per megawatt hour range, uh, going forward. But that's still good for, for any of these like. RMLD because you can put that, you, you, you're getting your hands on that. Power before someone else does and you're bringing it to your portfolio. Which when you're doing weighted average cost, it's still very competitive compared to an IOU. And nothing against the IOU, the IOUs weren't allowed to do this, so we got a bit of an advantage to get this done.
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, thanks, appreciate it, buddy.
All right, good, thank you. If you guys want to make the motion and then we'll hear about the, uh, the new EV rate. Uh, you, you have to do the cab motion first.
Which, which is.
For suggested EV rate, or do we do a presentation first?
We'll do a presentation.
You should do the presentation. Thanks. Um, let me introduce, uh, Megan, so Megan is the, uh. She joined us earlier this year, she is the Assistant Director of IRD. Um, she's got, I won't go through her pedigree, but most recently. I'll come at the PPU, so she's got an analytical bend, she understands our energy space, uh, intimately well. She and, and Bill drive the IRD team, um, so she's, uh, she's, she's already jumped into, uh. Uh, doing all sorts of stuff in the organization, so Megan, I will let you kind of walk through the, uh, set the context in terms of. What rate this is specific to and then explain how it's structured.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, good evening. Um. I'm gonna, oh, I think we can go.
You go, it's great.
Yes.
Perfect.
Uh, so I'm going to talk about a rate proposal about direct current fast charger, we call it DCFC. TOU demand charge rate. But before I introduce that rate proposal, I just want to provide some context of why we are doing this. Because, uh, since I joined here, um, we are already in the process of. Doing a comprehensive cost of service study and based on that, we're going to do a rate design overhaul for next year. However, we have been getting, uh, inquiries from our customers. About a EV rate, like specific DCFC, uh, rate. So in response to that, to, we didn't want to wait, so, you, you know, we came up with this, um, we call, I call it. A pilot rate, just so that it's available, if any customer wants to choose to use it, they can, they can use it. Um. We envision the kind of a potential customer who might use this rate or choose this rate, that, you know, for example, a, a store that, you know, put, put, puts in a, uh. Public DCFC charger, a two-port charger. And then maybe they could choose this rate if they can convince their users to, I'll, I'll explain how the rate work. Um, and, and, and that, that might be one scenario, another one, maybe just any kind of business, if they install DCFC chargers for their own employees or for their visitors. Or generally, if anyone can park there and use it as general public as well. So just to be clear, this is not for the, this is not a rate for EV drivers. It's for what, what we call a side host. That, 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 the DCFC chargers are on their premise. And then because we supply electricity to them, so we would provide this rate to them if they choose so.
And they would provide the equipment.
Yes, so they own the chargers.
The chargers are separately metered or no, this is?
It needs to be separately metered, but, um, I think the chargers, the, the network charger, the smart chargers. They have interval data, so that, that is an option, they don't have to install another meter.
Would, would this potentially apply for any of the chargers installed around town?
Uh, this would be, this would, so this is, um, a rate we would charge to an intermediary. Who could then either decide to bill or not bill their customers. Um, it would not be an RMLD own piece of equipment, it would be, it would be. A third party or the grocery store, and it, uh, it could be Tesla, uh, they could, it could, so this is a, this is a model where somebody else owns the charger. ChargePoint is the big. ChargePoint could be enough. Now, just for clarification in terms of ChargePoint. Um, ChargePoint typically sells their chargers to somebody else, like, and we have several of them. Um, and then they also provide the software that, that manages all the transactions as well. Um, in, in our territory, ChargePoint is primarily a service provider and equipment provider, as opposed to them owning the, the hardware, but that's a good, a good observation too.
And the way the rate is set up is, um. Without this rate, the customer, you know, the, the kind of a typical customer, they can choose a commercial rate or industrial for their EV chargers, they can still have the same account. You know, tied to their building, they can still do that, this is just to provide them another option. So the way we design, as I said, we don't have a whole lot of cost or service. You know, background information for the rate design, so basically we're just looking at the existing C rate and I rate in this table. And we basically not changing any other components of the rate. We're just either taking a component of the I rate or a component of the C rate for the, all the other components. The only thing we're changing is their distribution demand rate. So we're having a higher on-peak demand charge and a lower off-peak demand charge.
Could you please explain I rate and C rate?
Uh, the I rate is the industrial time of use rate, a C rate is the commercial rate. So on the table, those, those in black, those are already in effect. Those are the current rates, so the only thing we're changing are the two in, uh, orange or red. You know, which screen are looking at? Does that, does that make sense? And then the, so in order to test whether this rate would make sense, if we go to the next slide.
Just, just, you're, you're, um, anticipating the question, so the. Just distinguish the time horizon between the on-peak and off-peak rate.
Yes, yes, that's a good, uh, for the current industrial time of use rate, our on-peak has a very long period, it's between twelve and seven, I think.
Yep, twelve, seven.
Uh, for the DCFC rate, the on-peak period is only from four PM to eight PM, that's. That's currently where we see the peaks for the most part.
Near term.
So we want to narrow the, 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 the window of the peak so that people are not like shocked when they, you know.
And what is PPCT?
So PPCT is, it is a combined rate for capacity and transmission, so it's all bundled into one PPCT rate. But that's where the, that's where the high. That's where the, um, significant components of the cost increases come from, capacity and transmission. You go.
And. So, um, this chart is comparing the bill impacts of the, the three different rate choices. And this is based on a, uh, two-port DCFC charging station. That's about, it's less than two hundred kilowatt, like, the maximum is less than that. And then the rate is calculated based on the highest monthly demand of that charging, we have a charge, uh, three charging stations here at M L, uh, R D. So we use that data, um, to kind of develop that, that bill impact, uh, calculation. Uh, you can see on the chart, if, uh, the side post. Anyone, all, all the drivers that come to the side post, use the DCFC chargers. And only charge during off-peak hours, which is outside the four to eight PM window, time window. That customer, that side post, that grocery store or that business, they will pay the lowest bill of all three rate choices. But however, if all the drivers come to the site and charge between four and eight, they will pay the highest, almost the highest. It's, it's almost the same as the, the commercial rate bill, bill impact. Yeah, so if the drivers come in just randomly, I, I'm sure not all will come during those four hours, not all will come outside the four. So if it's in between, then the bill impact will be between those two numbers. Does that make sense? Yeah, so, so basically, the idea of a TOU is, you know, to encourage the user, the drivers to charge outside the peak window, because for DCFC, the biggest impact is their power, the charging power. Well, you know, especially one, one port could be fifty kilowatt, that's like five houses capacity. So that, you know, the, the idea of having this, you know, considerably lower rate for the off peak period is just really to encourage them to, to, to think about when they want to charge or use that charger.
Do you know if the these people, these people who own these uh charging stations, they are basically just charging a premium or whatever you're paying, whatever they're paying us?
Right, that's a very good question because um, that, that's why.
Then, then, then it doesn't matter to them because they're just passing the fees on to the.
Well, that's the thing, they could be paying a high demand charge when they can, you, you, you really cannot really charge a customer, like the customer comes to buy grocery and then they happen to charge during that time. I'm not sure if they, uh, it's, it's their decision. Would they could just do really?
Charging fee be variable too? I assume it could be. So if it.
Yeah, that was my question, yeah.
If I may, so um, we are not setting the, in, in this particular model or in this particular business model, we are providing energy and selling energy to a third party that is selling energy in our territory. And just to be clear, this is the only exception where somebody other than RMLD can sell power within the territory. And it was a provision that was made several years back primarily to the IOUs without a lot of thought to the nature of our business, just of context. So this is a, this is a very, and it's a very unique scenario. We as RMLD do, are not in a position to define who, what rates.
I, I understand, but, but the meters have the ability to have a variable charging rate, correct?
Which is what, which is what, as Megan's explaining, enables us to do this two block charge. You know, on peak, off peak configuration.
I mean, are the commercial institution that has these chargers, they pay RMLD the, the rate on demand or off, uh, on peak or off peak. But their charge to their customer could be variable as well, correct?
So like, we charge them a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They could pass all that a hundred and twenty dollars to their customers. To like whoever come, come in to charge, they could. Or they only, you know, pass through like fifty percent. I, I, it's, it's their decision.
I mean, I, I, I've never used a charger, but you just pay by card when you use these or how do you even do it?
Yep, it's, it's a credit, it's a credit transact, well.
So if a customer comes in between four and eight, he's gonna pay more for that power is the point.
If the.
He could, I mean, it depends, uh, he has, this, the owner has the ability to charge him more.
The owner's gonna pay us more. But whenever the owner decides to charge.
He has the ability to charge more if he chooses to.
And typically, they'll tell you how much you're.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Um, what is, how many chargers do you think this will apply to right away and how many in the future or do we have any, any sense?
Go ahead.
Um, so the increase we got, uh, one is, yeah, one is from Tesla. Um, but ever since we developed this rate, I think they dismantled their supercharger.
Oh, right. They took the team away and then they're, and then two weeks later, it's gone, he's gonna spend a half a billion, well, you know, okay, they're restructuring, so at the end of the day, it's, we're talking a handful, but it might have been twenty chargers um, at a, at a retail establishment in, in Wilmington was, was the reason why we had to do, had to put this in place. Cause they were saying, look, we wanna, we wanna do an installation in September, October.
Do, do we thi- i- is it somehow gonna be back retro, what's, what's the word I'm looking for? Reto, to all the existing ones? Is this gonna go and be?
No, this is the choice. So they could choose the next year or now, it, they could choose it, but they need to stay on the rate for one year.
Anybody who now has a charge point could switch to this next year.
Yeah, but it's a DC, it has to be a DC.
Okay, this is only DC fast charger.
Oh, it's the only, the very, very, okay, I'm sorry.
And the reason that's important is because those systems, like our system at the library has a capacity of a hundred and seventy-five KW.
Right.
Whereas, whereas the level twos we have out here, um, are seventy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So here's another question. Are you gonna be able to collect data on when those are being, at what, what the actual usage and the actual times people charge are and how those times?
If they own the chargers, uh, I'm not sure because if we don't have meters, I don't, I don't know if we can, but.
With our configure, we are going to make sure that we know that, in order for us to charge properly, we are going to have a meter on there that will do at least fifteen minute data. How we do that is open for discussion, but we will have that data.
So that in the years from now, we can go back and see when were these DC fast chargers being used and how did those, when did they align with peak times?
Definitely the intent.
In particular, when did they align with the annual or monthly peaks so that we got, we took a bath in, in a sense?
No, we did, yeah.
Cause we will take a bath, if, if somebody does a DCFC charge during the, the peak hour of the year.
Well, the intention, so the, the intention behind the rate design now is that, well, it's, it's higher, it during that.
It is, but it's, but the difference is eighteen cents versus ten cents.
Yes.
Where on the peak hour of the annual or the monthly, you could be facing ten, a hundred X for your wholesale power.
Yeah.
Or, well, the commercial rate, I think it's designed to, uh, uh, it's a balance, it's an app, right? So you, you're getting that across, across the board. You know, it's, this is the first foray into, into TOU. And but I will say that, anecdotally, the only thing you see is DC fast charge, period.
Well, I.
Uh, other than residential and smaller, but that's the only thing that, that I've been seeing in, in any, any new commercial, it's all DC fast charge.
You might not see it though.
In a residential, it's different. In a, in a residential place, that a, a multi dwelling unit, no DCS, but, but anything that's commercial, set, set up to sell commercially, it's, it's pretty much DC best job.
Cause you would see it though, cause they're just, uh, the, the level twos are just, um, they're just, um, not getting my words tonight. They're only like a two hundred forty volt like dryer out.
Right, it's kind of like. You know, on, so that's when we're talking about KW load, there's seven, somewhere between seven, most of them between seven and eleven KW. Some of the newer level twos go up to fifty KW, but you're right, the real, both of you are talking that, it, the DC fast chargers are typically between a hundred and.
Right, they're huge, but the level two that we see over at the charge points are only doing, pulling seven or eight thousand watts. If that's a two hundred forty volt connection, just like a dryer or a stove.
Yep, yep, yeah, yeah. So not as big. You're going back to the key, you know, what Bob was talking about earlier, you know. Pressure that we want to be aware of is the trend, there's energy and, and certificate costs, but the, the key driver that we're trying to be aware of is, as you, as you, as you guys all know, is the peak associated with capacity and transmission charges. And so this is, we have a, we had a customer that was aggressive. We figured let's, let's, let's get it in place, let's see who else comes up with it. We have, you know, there's one DC fast charger in our territory, which we happen to own, which is, which, which is the library, which interestingly enough, um, while it, while its utilization in terms of minutes per day is low, it is already um exceeded in terms of KW eight sold above all the other ones collected.
Interesting.
So I mean, it, it's a pipe, I mean, it throws, if you plug into it, man, you're, you can't quite see the electrons, but.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Big cable, man.
I guess all I'm getting at is that this seems like a great opportunity for peak management. And these prices, the, the price spread here does not look like a very big price spread to me. Uh, given the magnitude of what they draw and the need to manage the peak, they don't, it doesn't look that big to me. And it looks like a, a point source opportunity to do more, uh.
Uh, so I, I want to point out maybe two things. One is, uh, earlier you talk about the PPCT uh charge. We are actually still applying the, the kind of the um peak, off peak for fuel charge in the, in, in, in the DCFC rate. So there is still that differential that we're adopting from the industrial rate. And then in terms of the ratio between the eighteen and ten, um, I agree, but we just need more, which, that, like I said earlier, we need to do the cost of service study. If we want the ratio to be, for example, five to one, we need a solid basis to say that's five to one.
Okay, so it's gonna start somewhere in other words.
Yeah, okay, but, but I think Megan brings up a good point, and that we probably should have made that read on it, but the fuel on peak and off peak, it is mirroring the, the industrial rate, the I rate. As you see there, those last two lines, it's three point six four versus nine. Point oh, three, six, four versus point nine, nine, nine. So there's a three to one ratio there, but again, that's, that's roughly um, thirty percent of the cost of, of the bill. And then the other place, the other portion of it is the demand chart, which is not a point, point. So it's not, you're right, it's not extreme, but it's, it's, it's not, yeah.
So this is the rate for, would be the rate for a year. As we're going into the pilot and then would we, would we look at this rate as part of our annual?
Oh, yes. And we'll get data on what the actual and when it was used.
If, if customers do adopt this rate.
If they had. If they actually installed the charger.
Yes, yeah, well, another example, I think it's the UPS, they would, they are thinking about, you know, electrifying their fleet. And they probably wouldn't want to use DCFC chargers.
For a portion.
Uh, for, for part of that, yeah.
Can, can we change the name to punitive power?
Yes.
Can we change the punitive power, commercial charger?
I like the sound of that. Next question, please, yep.
Yeah, I, when I look at the rates and I'm, I'm under the perceive, I look at the definition of the periods, they kind of confuse me a little bit. I understand the eight to twelve, eight, five, four to eight, but then we go from eight to four. So it, it, you know, it, I feel it's just a confusion there because I assume the four is the next day.
Yes.
But I, it's not clear to me.
Okay.
That that, that is.
Yeah, it's.
You need to clear that language up.
Yep.
I think there needs to be some sort of clearing that language. I mean, somebody could come along and say, well, you know, hey, I was, you know, I was there between four and eight. You know, even though with them and ours, they're at midnight.
Yeah.
Been clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So we ready to do motions and votes and all that?
Yeah. Uh, so I move that the Citizens Advisory Board recommend that the Board of Commissioners vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to create the following M D P U rate effective for billings on or after June first twenty twenty-four, it's the three fourteen DCFC EV charging rate. Second?
Second?
In favor?
We got, um, Vivek was gonna abstain from these votes, which is the three of us.
Okay, so. Okay.
Um, so all in favor?
All in favor, aye. Roll call, roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Ken Walter, aye?
Tim Woods, aye? Thank you.
Vivek needs to, uh, say, he abstains.
Yeah, Vivek's saying it for us.
Yep.
Billy, want to read the motion?
Uh, I can raise the official.
You jumped on the last one.
Personally attached that one, it's a minute. That probably be in my email by the time we get back in the other room.
Move to the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to create the following M D P U rate effective for billings on or after uh June first uh twenty twenty-four.
Any, any further discussion? Looking forward to the data.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, hold, ready for a vote?
Okay.
Five of them. Favor, thank you very much and nice to meet you.
Yeah.
All right, NEPA conference, is that what we're up to?
Yes.
All right. Uh, who wants to read and uh assuming that we're okay with, we're going to the NEPA conference?
Yep.
There's a motion here, but go ahead, yeah.
Do we combine them?
Uh, no, I think we have to.
Okay.
Well, I think the reason why we structured it a little bit differently is we set the, the, the two boards, the Board of Commissioners, CAB to be those who extend to all, and then you can decide later on who will pay up on your travel schedules.
Ray, you're up.
Um, B O C suggested motion, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve Greg Fitts' uh travel to and attendance at the Northeast Public Power Association, NEPPA Annual Conference. Take place August twenty fifth through twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four at the Omni Mountain Washington Resort in Bretton Woods, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any discussion, all in favor?
Yep.
Motion carries five to oh.
You have a second on that? I did.
Yeah, Pam seconded, yep. Ray, you wanna go for the next one?
Uh, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve for all commissioners that are interested in attending travel to and attendance at the Northeast Public Power Association, NEPPA Annual Conference to take place August twenty fifth to twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four at the Omni Mount Washington Resort in Bretton Woods, New Hampshire.
Second.
Pam seconds, any discussion?
I just, I think, you know, I've always found this and I've been many of these, it's a good uh time to kind of network with other people. It's an excellent time, I recommend the commissioners go to it. I'm intend, I intend to uh, to, to tend. Maybe my last one, but that's a story. At this, and I think uh, we have to make, I think Erica, we have to make the uh full time arrangements ourselves. Is what we do, no, you make it.
Yeah, so what will happen is on, if you plan on going, you let me know and then I'll fill out training and travel form. But yes, you make the hotel reservations yourself and I would do it as early as possible because the room block fills up quickly.
Early to.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, what's the estimated cost for, for attending?
School. I think it's on the website. Some, I believe it's on the NEPA website.
It's like something like sixteen hundred bucks per person plus the cost of the hotel and travel.
Four hundred and fifty, hundred dollars, yeah, roughly, yeah.
And so obviously we cover that and it'll be the same thing like the, yeah, trip you did.
Did we have a second, Ray?
I did.
Yep.
Yep, okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries five oh. Gab?
Uh, Tim, you want to read the motion? Uh, move that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board approve for all members that are interested in attending travel to and attending at the Northeast Public Power Association, NEPPA Annual Conference to take place August twenty fifth to the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four at the Omni Mount Washington Resort in Bretton Woods, New Hampshire.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He's abstaining.
Yeah, Ken Walter, aye.
Tim Woods, aye.
That's Kelly.
Okay, procure requests. Um, who would like to read the tree trimming?
I can give Ray a break. Um, do you, do you want to talk about this before I read it?
Or typically, we, we read.
Okay, fine.
And then all.
Uh, so IFP twenty twenty-four thirteen tree trimming services move that did twenty twenty-four thirteen tree trimming services for hourly rates be awarded to Northern Tree Service LLC pursuant to Masterella C thirty, section thirty-nine M as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the general, general manager. The contract is for a one year term with the option for RMLD to renew the contract for a maximum of two one year renewal, renewal terms.
Second, second. Bob seconds it?
Greg? Great, so, um, you guys remember uh, earlier this year, we had a lot of discussions in terms of continuing to outsource versus bringing it in. Um, we all knew that, so part of discussing that point in time, that the existing contract was going to expire at the end of June. Um, so this is intended to do a replacement of that one that would start um at the beginning of July. Uh, we sent a bid out, went out to fifteen customers, uh fif- fifteen companies. Uh, we received two bids, one from the incumbent Mayor Tree Service and the other one from Northern Tree Service. Northern Tree Service, um, they're both um large, um, well-known reputable um tree trimming co- uh, companies that work throughout New England. Um, both uh, uh, Mayor and Northern Tree in particular do a lot of work with MLPs such as ourselves, so. Um, the one thing that we ended up doing on this particular bid, we um, in the last bid, we were experimenting with um doing a span, uh, on a span base as opposed to one hourly base. Um, the conclusion we had um is that the hourly base. Um, the conclusion we had um is that the hourly base is probably uh. A less expensive than exactly bid process, uh, well. Um, it looks like based on the bids that we received, that that looks like it's gonna be the case. Um, so anyways, in the table, um, in order to make the bids comparable, we did it on a. Structure, so there was a consistency of how many hours would be bid. So while you see there, um, the two numbers eighty four thousand seven hundred ninety eight versus ninety nine thousand five hundred forty, uh, we expect the. The actual money that we spend to be a million, yeah, to be a million dollars a year, but that's basically what allows us to give a comparison. If we were to expand that out, the difference is a little bit over. Ten to almost fifteen percent difference, roughly.
Yeah, Erica, I'm sorry, the the screen has gone crazy again.
I'm sorry, it's like I'm working on it with I T.
Um, yeah, so he's he's working on that piece. So anyways, um, all said and done. It's a, it's a, it's actual. Voice activated. So anyways, um, any?
That was the screen background.
Screen saver or whatever it was. Um, so any questions on the tree trimming service? So we're gonna, uh, and and as you, you know, as it's in the motion, um. The intention of that is, you know, we'll go a year, um, but then.
And that, so it it's gonna become a major expense over time.
Uh, it's not insignificant already, but yeah, agreed. Any other questions?
Well, we're ready for a vote?
Yep.
Okay, we had a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries five oh.
Um, okay, um, move that I F P twenty twenty four fourteen for alignment tools be awarded to Stewart C Irby Company LLC. Doing business as Irby Utilities for fifty five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars pursuant to M G L C one sixty four. Section fifty sixty on the recommendation of the general manager.
Good context on this one is, um, obviously we have that.
Second, yeah. Sorry.
So um, our our line crews, uh, we've been, we've got a, we currently have a collection of three different brands of battery powered tools. Um, that requires us to stock three different. Versions of batteries and chargers and backup tools, et cetera, so. Um, we did an analysis, decided that if we could focus on one um tool brand, um, that would be great. Um, so went through a process in terms of uh looking at. Um, three primary brands, but the two dominant ones were Milwaukee and um DeWalt. We also happen to have. Uh, Makita in our collection as well. Um, we ended up looking, we ended up deciding, given the breadth and the warranty and the tools associated with Milwaukee, to focus on Milwaukee, they actually. Have a line that is focused on lineman tools, very well respected and used throughout uh the industry. Um, but the key driver for us was standardizing on on tools. And so in the, oh, oh, by the way, um, the capital budget we have is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars um for the twenty twenty four for tools. Um. Milwaukee uh has a five year general warranty, um, and a two year replacement warranty. We went out to um. Uh, eleven companies, three of them returned bids, um, of those, we narrowed it down to two. Um. Uh, Irby, um, we ended up choosing Irby um over Westco, and the reason being is that um. Irby, while labor, um, a couple thousand dollars more expensive, they have a tool exchange program, so we would make a, we would basically trade in our. Um, um, DeWalt's and uh Makita tools for our credit that will exceed the difference between those two. So all said and done, um, the key driver is a combination of cost and standardization.
Do you think there's any risk with the lead time being significantly longer on the? Irby versus Westco?
No, no, um, they're pretty, uh, no, I mean, we have tools right now that we can. The the reason for the Irby is the key driver for us on those is the customer service behind it. They've got a local rep that will come by, so instead of us having to. I could get up and shipping it back to Milwaukee, Irby will come and pick them up, but there's a problem.
So initial delivery might take more time, but then that ongoing service is better, okay?
Local services is.
Further, did we have a motion in a second?
Yes, we did.
Need further details? Okay, we have a vote, all in favor? Motion carries five oh.
I'll just keep on rolling on this one, um, move that I F P twenty twenty four seventeen for single phase pole mounted transformers. Be awarded to United Utility Supply, uh, C O E L Flowers and Associates for two hundred and thirty two thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars. Pursuant to M G L C one sixty four, section fifty sixty on the recommendation of the general manager.
Those particular ones.
Second, oh, sorry.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ray.
Very.
I'm so excited.
I know.
Um, this went out to uh fourteen companies, we actually received uh sealed bids from six, uh, which is good, yeah. Um, at the end of the day, um, and obviously you guys know from all the discussion we've had over the past, um, transformers are something we buy on a consistent and regular basis. Um, this particular one, we'll talk about, this particular one are for pole mount transformers, and we'll talk about in a moment, the pad mount transformers. Um, you know, I think, you know, the the key pieces that the, these tend, not tended, um. If you look at the table in the back, um, they ended up being the uh least least expensive one, but it's also, we've worked with them in the past. So it, we've got experience with these. Um. Uh, with these particular transformers. Um, the prices are slightly higher um than the purchase that we made a year ago. Um, but the lead time actually is less, yeah, well. Yeah. There's not a lot of downward, you know. There's not a lot of downward pressure on transformer prices quite yet, um, but the good news is the lead times is uh. Short, which is a good thing, Bill.
Yeah, so I have the question on this one and the next one. This this particular company seems to be much lower than the other ones. Have we done due diligence in this company that?
You've boxed them from the past. We've dealt with them, yeah, this is a known, we've worked with them in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just seems that they're so much lower than everybody else. I just wondered the viability of the company, you know?
Uh. Both the manufacturer and and Flowers, both are companies that we've worked with, so we don't have any concern about them. You know, I think at the end of the day, we can go back to, you know, the question, um. I think there's still, there's still value pricing going on, you know, who do you, you know, where do you, there's limited capacity in terms of the demand. And where you're gonna price, so.
Yeah.
Um, but in terms of due diligence, it's just the companies, for us, they've been around for a while, we've dealt with them about.
That's one.
Hey, Bob has stepped up. Do we have any more questions on this? We could vote without him?
Yes.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Motion carries four oh, oh, I guess, with Bob temporarily out of the.
All right, um, pad mount transformers, uh, move that I F P twenty twenty four eighteen pad mount trans mounted transformers. Be awarded to United Utility Supply, C O E L Flowers and Associates for two hundred and fifty two thousand and seventy dollars. And Switchgear U S L L C for one hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars. Pursuant to M G L C one sixty four, section fifty sixty on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second.
Very stressful being this board.
A bid was sent out to sixteen vendors, we received proposals from six, again, uh, higher than what we've been doing recently, which is great. Um, as you, as you see from the proposal here, um, severing, seven different types of pad mount transformers. Um, and and the types are basically the size of the transformers. Um, and so at the end of the day, um, it's like we decided again, united, um, via. Uh, E L Flowers for a portion of them, and then Switchgear L L C for the other portion, um, it depended upon the size of the transformers. So again, we've dealt with both of them, um, the good news, you know, at the end of the day. Um, they're still expensive, but uh in both cases, uh, the lead times, um. Most of the lead times are lower, some of them, some of them have, it's a mixture in terms of the size of the transformer, you have to find.
Questions on the transformer related questions? What's what's your surplus inventory? I mean, is that?
We're in good shape.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, again, and this is, um, yeah, interestingly enough, in the past, uh. Eight weeks, um, some of the deliveries that were forecasted to be end of the year came in early, um, and so one of the things that. So so you guys know, um, our uh uh transformer replacement program that we are pretty. Uh, aggressively, significant volumes in uh twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, had to back way off in twenty two and twenty three. Um, you know, we're, we're actually redirecting one of our two underground crews to handle the pad mount transformers, so we've got, anyway, bottom line. Uh, good inventory, so we're, we're, we, you have to manage to make sure for emergencies, um, failures, et cetera, that we have inventory. We're in good shape to such an extent that our, our replacement program, we've accelerated back up again, not quite so that what we had in twenty one, twenty twenty one period. Pretty close, so good, good shape. But obviously, don't take your foot off the pedal, right? You gotta keep, gotta keep the pipeline full.
Other questions? Ready for a vote?
Yep.
All in favor? The motion carries five oh. Okay, policy review. I can, we've all read every, what?
No, I can go back to reading if we're, unless you're gonna have discussion.
I'd say we've all read every syllable of all of the edits, I take it, did our homework this time?
I did, I have no life.
I did. It doesn't mean you have no life. You did, you do diligence. Um. So anyway, actually, I have a quick before you could read the motion, but I think Erica very helpfully summarized the changes in a table, correct?
Yes.
So if you look at the table, it has all the red lines uh isolated.
Mm hmm.
Very helpfully, and I reviewed that, and so anyway, if you want to read the motion, Ray, and then we can discuss.
Okay. Move that R M L D Board of Commissioners approve policy nineteen, Board of Commissioners revision sixteen as presented on the recommendation of the general manager.
And we want a second time?
Second.
Bob seconds, both Pam and Bob second and third.
The only comment, um, just as a reminder, um, the intent, the revisions that are in play here are to. But the intention was to take. The responsibility of the Board of Commissioners that were spread across multiple, multiple, multiple. Um, different policies to compress them, so most, a lot of this was moved. Um, we did policy thirty earlier in the year with the assumption that we would make these changes, but you'll see um that. Again, we try and do um a couple each meeting, um, but there'll be several. If assuming that we approve these three tonight, um, there'll be other ones that some of the stuff that will be in here, we'll need to pull out of. Um, policy reviews later on this year.
So we've had a motion in a second. Any discussion? What we're doing, nineteen first?
Yeah.
This please.
Okay.
Assuming it's all summarized in the table, I reviewed it, thought the changes were all very good, thank you very much.
Mm hmm.
Anybody else?
Yes, I was fine with it.
Anybody else have comments or questions on the changes deposit? Take a minute to look at it if you want.
This is a reminder, we did, uh, when we looked at this at the previous meeting, um, we had council review this as well, with us, just make sure that we got everything proper and right.
The only comment I think it covers our. This, the changes, when we talked about uh terms and who could be.
Oh, is that it?
Vice chair.
It is, okay. And where is that? Just let's look at that real quick.
Well, it's, um, I think it's, oh, it it's.
Sorry about, I missed the comment.
About.
When we talked about when and how long to, because of uh issues that happened in writing earlier about the chair, I think we opened up. Um, you can be the chair in your third year, but before there was an unwritten.
Oh, I see it now, yeah.
Where, I I'm not seeing it, where?
It's in, it's on page, um, one of sixteen, it's the second to the last. Actually, as I look at it, it says the board member who is up for reelection may not be appointed as chair in the year that he.
Go to column before.
Okay, okay, sorry.
So the, yet that actually been moved, removed restriction.
Mm hmm.
So that, in essence, that that's been struck.
Correct, okay.
So if you look up on the screen, I have um this section that says officer.
Yeah.
This is where we need some changes.
Yeah, yeah, that was very good.
You captured your request.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's been removed, okay?
Mm hmm.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ready for a vote?
Yep.
All right, all in favor? Okay, all opposed, passes five oh. Thank you. Ray?
Board policy twelve. Move that the R M L D Board of. Board of Commissioners adopt policy twelve, Board of, Board Document Dissemination Revision four as presented on the recommendation of the general manager.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Uh, Greg, do you want to just, anything to discuss here?
Yeah, um, this one, along the same structure of nineteen, um, some of the pieces were basically taken the. It's on page one of the original one. To sound page one of the original one responsibilities removed to nineteen. The rest of it was just clear, you know, if you can see in that cover page. Provided support and clarity in terms of the roles of the commissioner versus the GM. At that table at the very bottom, right? There's a lot of red lines here, but at the end of the day, most of it. Streamlines. These were written at a time when. They were meant to be standalone documents. So twelve. Um it now works in concert with. And specifically. See, but E, where you see most of the red line deletions, procedure relative to executive session minutes, materials were moved to policy nineteen.
Yeah.
For the biggest changes, or that's why they're not the biggest change, but most of the red lines are.
But I did see the executive session minutes in the nineteen. Right, so that is in nineteen now. The review of the executive section.
There we. Ready for a vote? Yep, okay, all in favor? All opposed, passes five oh, thank you.
We 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 read it in a second.
Oh, no.
We already. Not thirty two, right, correct. So thirty two.
With the the army board of commissioners adopt policy thirty two, public comment provision zero as presented on the recommendation of the general manager.
So the new policy. And I think at the last meeting when uh. This part was here. We had some discussion on this particular one. Uh and I um. So this is, this is, there's no edits from our previous ones. This is new. But it's meant to basically um allow for the board of commissioners to have. Some level of control over public comment. Control and influence, probably best way to put it.
Maybe second on the motion too.
Second. So I have a question, um. It says the board will not respond to comments made during public comment periods. I don't know if other boards have this policy and they have a similar comment, but it feels like. It would be kind of a may choose. Versus will not.
I would agree with that change. It's not like we're gonna absolutely say that we we can't respond to.
Right.
Somebody has a question that they want to ask it, we want to answer it. You know?
You're you're free to where?
But I'm in uh section four one under procedures in the middle of that first that. It says the board will not respond to comments made during public comment periods. And I'm not saying that we. Have to or should not. It just feels like depending on the.
I I I agree with the comment that changing will to me.
Yeah.
Gives you the option to comment or not.
Yeah, at the discretion of.
Yeah, if we just take out the word will not. And just say the board may choose to respond.
Or may respond.
Or may, yeah.
Yeah, or may choose, may choose to respond.
I I think we, I think that's a great live edit. I just, I know we had discussion. I can't remember that this is a while. We had a discussion with with Pollard. Assuming that that there's no other state law that we have to follow, um we'll assume this works. If there, and if that's not, I just want to check one more time because we had talked about this topic. When we're doing all the.
There wouldn't be though, because if anything. The law would allow comments.
It's a, yeah.
I can I speak for Zara? Please from uh we KP walked into town of Wilmington, we had to meet with them because we had a. Residents coming and creating havoc. Um public comment is just that, public comment. You do not have to allow. You can allow a timeline for public comment. You can say, okay, all public comments limited three minutes per person. And you can choose whether you or not you answer, but if you. In theory, if you choose to answer. One person, but then the next person you choose not to. I see what you're saying. That person could say, well, that wasn't fair to me because you answered that question. So you've just got to be careful with. Whether. If you're gonna answer questions for one, you need to answer questions. And it's not as cut and dry as saying, well, that was a simple question. And they got there. So just something to keep. But if you want to put time limits on how long someone talks.
And that's in, that's in, yeah.
It is, yeah.
So that's, I so um I know we had discussions with Chris and so. Uh what I'll do is um let's let's make the live edit of May. Um and prove it. And and approve it, the conditional on confirmation with council, something like that. You following?
Well, the only other.
I'm gonna leave it. We leave it till the May fifth meeting.
Leave, yeah, I I. I I think everybody has a a a different background and you can comment on something because you might have some expertise in that particular. Um topic. So removing it takes you out of that equation, right? You might be able to provide, oh, yeah, the reason why we do this is because. This, it it and. It's not just reading light, but it could be a general comment about something else. Right? And and the limit what someone can say, but to to your point is is once you close public comment, you can choose. Under um the next topic to say, I just want to address something that was said in a public comment without actually referring to. Yeah, answer that question. That way you're outside of public comment and you answer it. So if someone said something that. You disagree with it, you don't have to, and say the back and forth. You just say we're gonna close public comment. And when you move on, you. Then say I'd like to address something that might have been said or. And that's one way around it as well.
Right, so this applies to just that, that timeframe.
So I think we should, we should just leave it alone.
Leave it alone. And then in practice, if you want to do something different, you can do something different because it's a free country and we're allowed to.
And one other thing, a safe time. A safe answer is um we'll take it under our eyes. Yeah, so if someone says something, instead of getting a back and forth, we'll take it under advisement because you're not answering questions, you're just. Accepting what they've said.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. So leave it. But in practice. Okay, well, right.
It is three per uh speaker standard. I I seem to recall listening to select board. Meeting recently, it was two minutes per speaker is does it.
That's a good point. I mean, three minutes is, that's hard. Yeah, we I think. We don't quite have the.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
We're all different animals.
Yeah, okay.
I I feel blessed when somebody comes in and even just.
I guess we should have an engagement. Yes, that's.
So want to talk to you guys. So the the so the motion, so the motion, the original motion remains with as as written.
As, yeah.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Let me just read this, look at this again. This is kind of girding us for some. There's something really controversial.
We don't do anything controversial here. We just sell power.
Relatably. Low cost.
Do you have that tattoo on you? I didn't see it on the back of the Yeti, so.
Next year.
That framework.
I'll put that online. I like to have a question about point number six, says disruptive conduct and engaging in other unprotected speech. Uh including but not limited to the following in this long list, maybe grounds for the chair to curtail speech. And take other action as appropriate. What what might that other action be? Like, what would it be? From I don't know, so why don't we, why didn't I say that?
The laws of this country were built in the course of discourse. So people are allowed to sit out there and say whatever they want to. If you throw them out and there's an ambassador law case that has just now been settled where someone went all the way to the Supreme Court. And and sue the person on the board and the town. Uh so they're allowed to, you you can end public comment and then once public comments end uh ended. If they still disrupt, at that point, you can ask them to leave, but it's it's not as simple. So. You may want to do a little more investigation on that if you.
Alright.
We, uh there's never anything we're talking about with people coming into that, but if it was to happen, there is now um pay law. That supports someone being disrupted, disrupted.
You really earned your paycheck tonight. All right, well, then I'm good with.
Pretty face.
No, no, it's all good.
I mean, I think if someone like look at. Rats, I mean.
Yeah.
Has to have a public safety officer.
So, yeah, that was, that's all good. I'm I'm happy with it as as written. And anybody else have any comments or questions? Ready for a vote? All favor? All opposed, motion carries five oh.
I'm ready, okay.
Limited to three minutes.
Next. Yep. Okay, great. Uh so, couple things, um. So there's a, so NEPA holds the annual um line worker rodeo. It's a, actually, it's an E and O meeting. But they've been doing competitions since nineteen ninety nine, um and we have not participated in a long, long time. So um uh we prompted the team that we prompted the line crew to put together a team. And uh uh they, there's a, there's a just brief description, but um they were. Excited to uh to compete. And uh they placed second out of twelve MLPs. The first um. Plays team was New Hampshire Electric Cooperative. Uh they beat us by two points and uh that was one of the. A hat fell off of one of the guys doing one of the climbs. Um it is a, it is a much more manual. Physical climb pole, you can see some of the stuff that they do up there. But anyways, our team came back, uh so they were super psyched to play second. It, you know, I I put that word in there friendly competition. It's.
We have a new rivalry, so.
Yeah, there's a little bit of rivalry, but but uh our, you know, so. You know. We want to have a very positive reputation, um. You know, in all the different departments, right? And and the like, you know, everybody directs everybody, right? You know, this is a small community, the MLP world. And so uh the line work, you know, if you're. All of us, right? There's there's an element of competition. You want to be the best and, you know, and the guys keep telling me they are the best. And so. Prove it. And so they did a really good job. So that that's just, you know, that's a that's a bit of encouragement to them. Um and to and to us overall, so it's it's good.
I I I see this in the water industry. The water industry does the same sort of thing.
Yeah.
Um change out pumps and do whatever. And um. Great way to develop skills. It reinforces safety, health and safety uh protocols because. You're, like you say, your hat falls off, you lose points. And so you make sure you're get up there and come back down safe. So. Yeah, I'm I'm glad. You're doing it. I'm glad the team is excited about it and good job on second place.
They're already, they're already plenty to do. We're gonna, we wanted two teams next year.
Yeah.
We have a, we have, we do have a really good line. I mean, the entire organization is great, but.
Yeah, it's teamwork building. I I love it in every way possible.
So it it's good. On recruiting, um you know, we've been talking about for. Love ten, ten months now, the engineering role. So finalizing that, I'll have an announcement when we get together next time. Um marketing, uh the marketing manager role, so I I need to follow up with you, but uh we. Had to go through an internal process, um so we're through that internal process. Someone else trying to interview candidates, critically important role. Um control room, again, just a couple of highlights. Um we have a new higher starting. Start team. Um and another open position, that's really important. Um well, every position is important here. And then also finalize it, finalizing analyst role at the IRD. So uh anyways, that's going well. Um morale is continues to be good, really good. Land, so um Ken and I, uh we, so the first item, Lynn Field Central Water Department, uh so. We uh right before this meeting, we were at the uh. Uh attended a vote, public vote uh earlier today. Um it was unanimous that we can continue moving forward. Um this step was basically uh allowing the water department to enter into a lease agreement with RMLD. Now, this is, this is um. Uh water department land, so they're not in a position to sell it, but we're, they're in a position to lease. This will be. Roughly a two to two and a half megawatt solar array and battery system. It's the blue area. Um that white area is all of, they're building a new uh pump station um on Glen Road. And this is in the uh, obviously, this is in the eastern part of our territory. Um we have not really had any footprint over there. We have a little station too. There's nothing there. It's eighteen. Eighteen thousand and eight hundred square feet. Um it's where we're gonna put that mobile battery system um shortly. But anyways, um. So Ken, thank you for all the support.
And you are squeezing a little bit more capacity out of that.
Yeah, so so as. As you suggested, um yeah, we'll we'll. Yeah, uh we're gonna, we're gonna. We're gonna maintain roughly fifty feet um off of the western property line, which backs up to potential residents. The closest one would be another seventy five feet and then um from the first panels. From the tree line, that fifty foot buffer, the tree line, another twenty five feet to minimize shading. So it's gonna be seventy five plus feet at a minimum. And then on the. Those circular pieces are where it's a. Four hundred foot standoff from existing wellheads, so we'll maximize that because the wellheads don't care.
So Greg, how much solar and how much battery?
Five, it'll be a five megawatt battery system, either three or four hour. And then it'll be a. Two, somewhere between two and two and a half um solar array. So it's a small footprint, but well, two and a half is not bad. I mean, it's. It's good. So that's the size of it, Vivek.
Thank you.
Literally, like. Two hours.
Detailed the the benefit to the water department?
We did, yeah, 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 yeah. So. Um Phil's been at some of the, so this is the fourth meeting we've done, but this is the the last one we need to do to keep the ball moving forward. So. And it was part of our plan that we had talked about, the the sixty million dollar piece. This is one of the projects on that one. On Route one twenty five, wetland delineations complete, um the survey, which is a underlying piece for the survey. Um the physical survey. Um final acreage and shape of the acreage of of dry upland will obviously affect value. All the other due diligence items are to be completed by late our, late August. Again, will come before, as you guys remember. Um we will come back for approval to enter into a P and S um at the end of July. Uh with details in terms of what the actual. Based on all the due diligence, what the actual price will be. Um and we're, we'd still. Tend to be closed in October. Um in that, so as we continue to dig deeper and deeper and more and more due diligence, um that. Whole forty one acres, the majority of which is wetlands of one form or another. It has other value for us other than trying to put something on top of it. So we still have a lot of interest in acquiring that property. I will give you more details as we finalize finalize the due diligence probably in the July meeting, but that project continues to move forward. But it's it it has been a wet. Uh a wet springtime. It's so.
So so what is the Greg, you know my concern about the wetland, right? So how much of that? When you say wetland delineation complete, what does that mean?
Um Vivek, I'm gonna leave that for an executive session. Um and just in in the context of the way. The acquisition process has to go through and where we are in it, um I'll be happy to share that with you. Not in public session until we get to the P and S period, but.
Yeah, no, no, my my concern, you know, my concern, the concern is that like a hundred year storm or something, yeah.
And and I think you've heard consistently from from myself. And the RMLD team, um it needs to be dry land if we're gonna put anything of value on it. So we're, we are synchronized. Um I'll have more details later. Uh with my comment here, as we continue to move forward on this.
Thank you.
Which is good, yep. Well, received and and agreed to. Uh the other element, um so had a chance over the past two weeks, I think right before, right before one of our subcommittee meetings. Came back some meeting with Ben Avento. Ben Avento is a large land owner, um primarily in North Reading, but also in Wilmington. Um they are interested in, we would love to buy some land from them. Their land is is high and dry. And they would appreciate us as being a. Adjacent landowner and or tenant um uh for a whole bunch of reasons. We're not overly worried about the kind of business they operate. In fact, we, we there's benefits anyways. Um there's a roughly a twenty acre parcel that we would love to purchase, but we might end up leasing. Um and it's back to the question of all these other assets that we are talking about. We're trying to create alternatives to put. Um whatever sort of generation storage, solar assets we possibly can.
Greg, what can I say on um Ben Aventos? The amount of dirt and dust that happens, how does that affect the type of equipment that you would want to put in those areas?
Yeah, so that's part of the factors.
They 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 had a quarry, they they have a quarry or something, right?
Yes, sir. They are, they are core, and it's a dusty, it's a dusty environment. So that's part of the equation, which is part of the reason. Um, yeah, so we, so. Very valid point. Um given the size of land and where we're looking at, um. That'll be part of the equation, but our our goal is to get in the game. And then if we're going to decide not to do it later on, it's easier to say no. But exactly, exactly the right point to be thinking about. In addition, we met with um the town of North Reading um. Yesterday. Um and so there is uh at our existing substation three, uh which is behind the DPW. Um at one sixty four Chestnut Street. On the other side of the transmission. On the other side of the transmission line, there's another sixteen acres that is for all intents and purposes, land locked around wetlands. Wetlands is a common thread. Um, that probably, we have, we have due diligence to do, but the town is interested in selling that property to RMLD, which is great. So we will just want to let you guys know that we continue to pursue opportunities for land. Um, and then there is also eight acres, which is northwest of the USPS Post Office Distribution Hub. It's also southeast of uh, uh, it's kind of in the middle of nowhere, which is fine for us. Um, it used to be an old water treatment plant that had some contamination associated with it, so there's a lot of due diligence, but it's a little bit over eight acres that might be invaluable to us, and it literally is adjacent to the transmission lines. The interesting thing about the transmission lines, just for you guys all to know, there are two one fifteen KB lines um, that go literally right through there. One of those um, is what we're going to attach um, our new substation six to. And also we are attached, um, our substation three is currently attached to them. But also adjacent to it, there's also a three forty-five line that goes right through that. So it's a, it's an important thoroughfare. Um, we don't mind being close to transmission lines. Um, there's two other sites that the town owns, the town of um, Reading owns that could be potential sites for us to do either solar or storage or generation of one form or another. Um, so the town of of North Reading, we have an open dialogue and we have a a commitment, so I will come back to you for approvals, et cetera. But our our commitment or the commitment that uh, the town manager gave is that he will earmark us to be on the October. If we were to get this all done, we'd have to get um, town beating. Um, so it would be the October one. So we're setting the stage so that we can be prepared to do that. So that's a, just a quick update. Um, good news on land, but you know, short term, um, Linfield Solar Battery Project, uh, another big milestone.
Are there not reading sites close to a gas line?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Um, question? Friends and Family Day. You guys got a booth set up? What do you? What's going on town Friends and Family Day? I I've not, I've approached this day only through the Reading Climate Advisory Committee, um, is the Board of Commissioners or expected or show up or hang out or you get a hat or or what's expected of us?
Of you, so, um, yeah, you're, so so we do events. So we'll let you, we'll make sure that the events are known to you guys and they're most often become um, the 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 common one most is the annual car show that we do in August in Wilmington. But, yeah. We'll make sure you guys know about this one too.
I I just will go, we, the Reading Climate Advisory Committee will have a booth at the Reading Friends and Family Day, so I have competition for
For you.
Where I show up, yeah. Well, I certainly want to support, I certainly want to support my climate committee. Uh, but if you, if you if you wanted to run back and forth, I just want to know how much running I want.
Maybe maybe we'll try and get ourselves closely, you know, closely located to you guys.
It's a small field, but not too far away. First go, first serve, probably. But I'll set up to rotary, I think.
Good, thank you. Great, thank you, Greg. Uh, Pam, you want to update us on the work of the committee?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, as we agreed last time, we um, formed the Strategic Power Supply and Load Management Committee. Um, first time we met, um, the uh, committee elected uh, myself chair and it consists of Bob, Beck and Ken. Um, as well as myself. So we've met three times. Uh, the first time we met, we were really focused on the scope of the committee, uh, which we had a bunch of conversations, but we essentially agreed to focus on really fully focusing on the fuel cell with carbon capture um, programs, really understanding the opportunity that presents, the financials, the milestones and the risks and how we can mitigate those um, ahead of uh, any votes to officially move forward. Uh, so our first meeting focused on determining the schedule. We meet about every week. Uh, second meeting focused on the process and the key milestones for the investment, specifically within twenty twenty-four, as we try to move forward to get to the um, uh, the right timeline to ensure we get the appropriate incentives. Um, it also focused, how did we, had an executive session that focused on the uh, the details of the financial model. Uh, and then the third meeting focused on um, a failure mode and effects analysis, um, which really summarizes the specific risks and any mitigation activities that we can do to ensure the program is successful. Um, that would be a living document that I would expect we would share with the broader group. Um, and that we would keep it up to date with. Anybody want to add anything from the
I just have one question. Will there be minutes of these meetings?
Yes, there are minutes. Uh, we, we voted already to approve the first set. I think we have two more sets we need to approve, but we are reviewing those and then approving them at the beginning of the meetings.
Good. I'd like to maybe get them distributed to everybody, if we could.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And we also record the sessions.
That's a good idea. Throw them quickly so we can get them out, maybe attach them to the full board. He didn't say which Sunday C R L said. But now, thanks, Ken. Anything else scheduled then?
I don't know, I I I think the the it's, we're getting into a lot of good detail. And I think Greg is gonna cover some of that in the executive session today, right? I think some of it is also around how to communicate the complex nature of the problem.
Good suggestions. Does this seem like a worthwhile thing to be doing?
I I believe, yes.
This project.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we're getting into a lot more detail that I think, yeah, it'll be a little bit of a challenge compiling it quickly and making it, you know, brief, but we've gotten into a lot of detail.
You're gonna be, the alternative was is to have like meetings every two weeks of the full board, you know. Anyway, with, probably with you guys too, because it's so much to go over the magnitude of the investment.
Drinking from a fountain.
Exactly.
Yeah, so it's
So, okay. So that's the schedule, this being May twenty-third. I think we're good with that date. Um, the next two, are we good with those?
Ask the question.
Yes.
Only because um, being on the board for this while, for as much time as I've been on it, and Phil's been on it since Fred Flintstone was generating power. But he may have the answer to this. Why wouldn't we do more joint meetings instead of having separate meetings? It probably gets you home one night a week.
Well, and and minutes too.
I mean, and we cover a lot of stuff that we may not go over, that you guys go over, that's interesting information. I don't know if there's ever a time, and that's where Phil may know, um, that it wouldn't make sense, but why wouldn't we do this?
Tradition, that's about it.
It's it, right?
It's it, tradition.
New tradition. So I I don't know, I'm I'm just suggesting.
You're on a roll tonight. You already fixed our public comment.
Yeah. In the beginning of town, the C A B was actually staffed.
Hold on, I'm gonna take minutes.
The C A B was actually, was not the the general manager who came to those meetings. It was the underlings under that. The people, the 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 next level of management, but that
You you noticed what we did two years ago, and I'll be, I'll be blunt, we elevated the C A B.
Yeah.
Specifically.
I've been on it for eight years, so at least eight years we elevated.
Forgive me. Just a pretty face.
I mean, the thing about, to your point, I mean, it was always struck, it was weird that like when it came budget time, you you would get the budget first.
Yeah.
And like, we're not even allowed to look at the budget until you, you're okay with it. And then we can't change it unless we go back through you. So there's, you're onto something of like, let's have a more rapid.
I mean, I think it's a great suggestion, and it's for for Greg and Erica and the staff here too, it saves you guys time.
But there's times like Dave will sit in on a meeting and he'll be just sitting there listening, and then all of a sudden he'll come up with a couple of questions that we wouldn't have. Or I sit on your meeting, you guys have one, but the rest of the team hasn't heard that. So I just think it may add value to the whole process. I mean, obviously, we just proved that you guys voted on what you needed to vote on. We we put motion on one, so just something to think about.
What, what, how about if we?
Policy nineteen, if if we're gonna do joint meetings, right, um, we add something uh, in there or or somewhere that, you know, if you have a comment, right, which how do you, how, do we need to incorporate then into policy nineteen at the cab? As a comment, if we do joint meetings more often, right?
The event, the policy that, so I think the question's valid, look, look at it, but policy nineteen is meant to be, what are the responsibilities of Board of Commissioners? So this is more, these are things you're supposed to be doing. Not, not, but not how you run the media.
You guys voted on all the policies and we've had nothing to do with it, so you're still controlling your part of the meeting and following all your policies. We're just here observing that.
What I see, but from what Bob just said makes me think, if you, if you guys start chiming in, are you the public?
We would be, yeah.
That question, are you, is it public comment?
Okay, we don't vote on it. So we, we may have some great comments and, you know, we have a quorum, so we're officially here.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we had enough history of joint meetings now, right? So if those have been fine.
This works out great.
Fine going forward.
Well, what, so Thursday, the fifth is currently scheduled as a joint meeting. And then, and then the question, well, and so is the June twentieth meeting. No, I'm sorry, it's, it's that shifted by a half hour. Well, do we want to make that? I'm sorry, too, yeah. So do you want to make the June twentieth a joint? We actually should probably make the June twentieth because that's when we're gonna be making some decisions on carbon capture fuel cells, so that that legitimately should equally be a joint meeting. I'm gonna suggest, I offer that as a
And then we can, we can start earlier so that
Yeah.
if it's gonna be a long one.
Yeah. Well, how long is it gonna be? But let's start early, that's right. I mean, I get Hey, if you want to start early, we can go noon.
Already taken your zoom.
Seen a lot of you guys leaving. So I I would suggest maybe on the Thursday, June twentieth, that we start at six, six.
To you guys.
Six.
If it's joint, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
That works.
Yeah, I mean The June fifth is the same, there's no reason not to make them.
Yeah, so the, unfortunately, the June fifth, we have the audit committee meeting prior to, so yeah.
Yeah.
But the twentieth, um, move to six and make
Joint. And make it at six?
Yeah.
Um, can we, since we know August is not currently scheduled, so we try and
We even want to do it in August, we usually don't.
That's what I'm suggesting. I'm agreeing with you. So how about, since we've got the schedule here and everybody's physically here, why don't we, why don't we figure out July? Now. Are you guys in a position to look at your calendars quickly?
Yeah, I got it.
So July, um, Thursday, I'm Bob and Dennis, I know you guys, in terms of Thursdays and Wednesdays, do you guys have a I'm, I'm gonna tell this to everybody, but
Wednesday is my toughest day, everything in town.
So how about the eighteenth of July? Not the Twenty-fifth?
I'm, any day than Wednesday, on Thursday is five in May, so.
How about July twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday?
Yeah.
At six, I would be.
Yeah, works, works for me.
Great.
Six P M joint meeting. And then August, do we want it in August or not?
No, it's a network.
Yeah, we have the conference.
We typically don't, but on the other hand, I mean, assuming we we resolve all these bleak decisions by July, no, but then there's two full months without a meeting. I know we, I know the tradi- tradition, but Dennis is all about, you know, ending traditions.
I wanted to, Dennis, what do you think?
What if we had a placeholder, and if we need to make a decision specifically to anything time-sensitive we do, and then if we don't need
August fifteenth, we'll, we'll schedule it and then we can cancel it.
Let's do that.
August fifteenth?
We can always not do it, but yeah, just in case we need it.
Good, everybody?
Okay, I'm out on fifteenth on August. Out.
Twenty-second. The conference is
Twenty-fifth or the twenty-eighth. Technically, we could be back with twenty-ninth, but twenty-second is probably a better option.
Twenty-second may not work for me.
So I think the twenty-second is
Is the best compromise?
Yeah, it doesn't work for me, but yeah, yeah, it's okay.
So we'll, we'll schedule, and then if we decide to cancel, we can, but we got a placeholder, six o'clock joint.
Yep.
August twenty-second.
Yeah, yeah, it just doesn't work for me, but that's okay.
Thanks, Vivek. I mean, we, thanks, the rest of us could do it the other, the other day.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. Thank you.
My birthday is the twenty-third, so we can celebrate it.
The big five oh, doesn't come around every year, does it?
Seventy-one.
Okay. So uh, I think we got a lot done tonight. So we're ready for the motion to go into executive session. C A B first, C A B first.
And move that the RMLD Citizen Advisory Board go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law C one sixty-four, section forty-seven D. Exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss trade secrets or confidential competitively sensitive or other proprietary information provided relative to carbon capture fuel cells for the approval of executive session minutes and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment. Required, seconded and roll call, Ken Walter, I?
Ken, move it, Dan, it's Kelly, I?
Vivek, Sonya, I.
Do this one, um, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law C one sixty-four, section forty-seven D. Exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss trade secrets or confidential, competitively sensitive or other proprietary information provided relative to carbon capture fuel cells for the approval of executive session minutes and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
I'll second that.
Roll call, roll right.
Uh, reporter.
How about I?
Call direct.
Okay, we're adjourned, very good. We'll go to the second.